It's September 10th, 2020, and I'm calling this Lacey City Council meeting to order. And once again, we are
Thanks Bob.
In this meeting remotely. And given that, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands
One nation under God indivisible and just for Amen. Thank you, everyone. We do have a agenda and consent agenda for today. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the agenda as posted.
I second it, Cynthia.
You've been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And this is just a quick reminder, we did add a a report under the city item under the City Manager's report, the Lacey Makerspace Funding Request. Given that any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded all in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries and we have an agenda. We did not receive any verbal public comments request for today or written public comments as well. And so our first item is under ordinances of the Final Budget Amendment ordinances. Troy. It should be coming out any second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. The item before you for consideration this afternoon is what is titled, "The Final Budget Amendment of 2020", but I don't think that will be the case. I do expect one additional amendment later this year related to additional CARES Act funding that has been awarded to Lacey. So apologize for missing the title on the agenda. But you do have the full details of the amendments listed in Exhibit A. I would like to highlight the more significant and highlight some of the council priorities in terms of going through the staff report. And I'll start with the general fund departments. And under the current expense fund, we have an $86,000 amendment proposed for facilitation services related to the community-driven process for the city's homelessness response strategy. We do have an amendment proposed of $102,396, and this is related to the Affordable Housing State Shared Sales Tax. This was Senate House, Subsidiary House Bill 1406, in which the council took action on late in 2019. This number actually represents just 10 months where the sales tax in 2020, that tax wasn't actually in effect until the third month of the years. And I'll remind the council that the maximum amount that the city will receive on that is $110,304. So that is available. I know there are regional discussions and discussions with, certainly here within the city, as to some of those initiatives. So this money will be available once you approve the amendment. There are several amendments related to the CARES Act funding. That was a $1,538,000 total amendment. Some of it is within current expense, some of it is within the capital equipment fund. So it's split between two different funds, but it does reflect the council direction on the amendment for the city. The amendment also includes a $357,000 amendment. And you'll probably remember during the discussions of the 2020 budget, we were talking about the Septic to Sewer Conversion Program within the Water and Sewer Fund. The council chose to delay that so we could have a consultant take a really deep dive within this matter to make sure that we have a proper and justified rate. And one of the thoughts was to delay that first year of this rate and have the general fund fund that. So that is included within this amendment. Under the Capital Equipment Fund, there are a number of amendments related to police equipment. We had a fairly decent sized expansion to staffing within the police department, which of course requires office equipment, more vehicles, more computers. So you'll see that within the Capital Equipment Fund. You also have a, an amendment for $175,000 related to the Laker, Lacey Makerspace. Back in February, the council authorized and committed $350,000 for the operation of the Makerspace for the years 2020 and 2022. So this, then this amendment includes the 2020. I will acknowledge that your discussion later tonight may also require an additional amendment, depending on the direction the council wants to go. So it does not address your later discussion. But as I said, I expect another amendment to occur for the additional CARES Act money and we'll have opportunity to change the budget again. Under the Building Improvement Fund, I do want to point out there is $25,000 there for the Military Memorial at the Civic Plaza. That's certainly been a council priority for this year. Within the Building Improvement Fund and Parks and Open Space, we have some amendments related to the museum and the Depot Playground Project. Some of this is just additional grant monies that are available for the design of the museum as well as some site cleanup. You do have a few amendments related to the Water and Wastewater Capital Fund. All of the numbers are significant. This is fairly routine within our capital projects. So just changes in, in dollar amounts within those projects. So that is a quick overview of what's in the amendment. Again, you have the full details in front of you. The Finance and Economic Development Committee met on August 25th and forwarded this to you, the full council for consideration. The staff recommendation is that you do amend the budget and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can I get a motion, please?
That we adopt the ordinance amending the 2020 budget.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt this ordinance 1569, amending the 2020 budget discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt this ordinance all in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries and we have adopted this budget amendments. Thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
So next up is the City Manager's report.
Thank you, honorable mayor and city council. Just the one item is the Lacey Makerspace Funding Request. George Smith should be providing the background on that and have an opportunity, or maybe Rick Walk and, okay, Rick and George. But George will be taking the lead on providing the background of this request.
And while George is coming online, we have an, I just want to set up the conversation with, we have an opportunity with the EDA Grant Program. We've made application to apply for about just over a million dollars' worth of equipment from the EDA Cares Funds. And with that requirement, though, there is a match, 20% match allocation that would need to be made. And so George will be presenting a option for the council to consider to make that match and complete our grant application with the EDA. So George, just in time.
Thank you. I don't see myself on there. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I think we, ah, there I am. The wonders of modern technology. So, Aaron, council, the item before you is related to the Lacey Makerspace. Council has had a long history of interest in diversifying and strengthening our economy. On recognizing that Makerspaces are a proven tool of economic development, council has been instrumental in the establishment and in providing funding and support to the Lacey Makerspace. And as Troy mentioned just a few minutes ago, February council approved funding to support operations in 2020, also committed to match up to $175,000 in 2022, so long as Lacey Makerspace raises any investment by the end of 2021. In COVID-19. And of course, like many other organizations, the Lacey Makerspace had to close its doors to its users, but it didn't just cease to exist. It coordinated volunteers to produce PPE, personal protective equipment, lots of, lots of cloth masks, but also because of the equipment, especially the 3D printers, they also did the face shields that were so desperately needed in the medical community for the hospital and for other medical providers. Chances are, you've probably seen face masks around City Hall because those face masks have been made available for created nonprofits, businesses to residents, and some of them did indeed come to City Hall. Because we structured the finances and the financial structure of the Lacey Makerspace to try to keep the fixed costs as low as possible, the closure did not have the devastating financial effect on Lacey Makerspace that it did on so many other organizations. Of course, in response to the, the economic impact of COVID, the Congress authorized the CARES Act funding. And one of the pieces of that was the CARES Act grant to the US Department Commerce Economic Development Administration. And what they were looking for was projects that would help to overcome and, and, and respond to the economic impacts of pandemic and to entice nonprofits to try for this and develop these programs. They reduced the match requirement rather substantially. So I worked with the very, very talented grant writer from St. Martin's University, Dr. Erin Hoyland, along with the Lacey Makerspace Executive Director, Joseph Anderson. And we submitted to the EDA a CARES Act grant request of just over $1 million. The match that we were proposing was through the generosity of St. Martin's University, a free seven-year lease on the facility that Lacey Makerspace occupies. The total value of that's in excess of $264,000. The grant funds would have been used to acquire a very, very sophisticated state-of-the-art art equipment, extremely expensive equipment, and would be used over seven years to provide training and retraining for workers who have lost their livelihoods and sadly entrepreneurs who have lost their livelihoods because their, their businesses have been killed by the, by the pandemic. This equipment is, is, has been identified for a very long time as a need for the Lacey Makerspace. And were it not for the potential for this grant, it would have taken years and years to raise the money and buy one piece at a time as the opportunity presented itself. We've received some very encouraging feedback from EDA. They've asked for some additional information. They've asked some questions. Specificity is very encouraging. Unfortunately, they also gave us some bad news. And that was that due to some very technical issues, the in-kind match that were $2,000 in value of the lease cannot be used as an in-kind match. It's absolutely essential to making the program work and it's certainly a tremendous value to the Makerspace. So we needed to find some other way to come up with a match, which is why we're talking this evening. I do want to update you, something that has changed since the staff report was prepared. And that is we got some very good news this week from the Evelyn, from the Bruno and Evelyn Betty Foundation. Lacey Makerspace had also applied to them for some grant funding and we've been informed that $150,000 has been approved. It'll be provided over a three-year period. It's for some very specific things. So we certainly can't use the whole $150,000 as match, but we can use about $78,000 of it to help match for this. So between the $150,000 from Betty Foundation, as well as the value of more than $264,000 from, from St. Martin's, we believe that on more than a two-for-one basis, that the Lacey Makerspace has been able to gain the community support that would qualify the Lacey Makerspace to be able to have, take the $175,000 that has been matched from the city of Lacey. So we have three requests. First, that the council recognize that the match has been made or to qualify for the $175,000 from the city in 2022. Secondly, to allow those $2022 to be drawn in 2020, actually to be committed in 2020. Very little of it will actually be expended. It'll actually be expended over the next seven years and it'll be expended for the very things that we always intended. But it would have to be committed. And speaking of commitments, the third thing that we're requesting, because we have to submit to the EDA a firm commitment in writing for the funds that the council authorized the city manager to sign the letter of commitment to the EDA for the cash match, for the, for the $1 million grant. I'll be very happy to answer any questions.
Can we start with a motion?
I'll try.
I would run right out there under the recommendation.
Okay. All right. I move that we authorize $175,000 in reserve funds allocated to the Lacey Makerspace in 2022, be committed to 2020 as cash match for CARES Act grant and additionally, the city manager to sign a letter committing these funds as cash match for grant application to the US EDA.
Second.
Well done.
So we move in seconded. Discussion. So George, you kind of went back and forth there saying about the in-kind a match from St. Martin's University that obviously totals overturn $64,000. That, that could be used for a match, but then it couldn't be used for a match. But then we are going to be using it for a match. I was like, you kind of, kind of lost me there.
It, it is a bit confusing. The indications that we'd had from EDA was that that would work as an in-kind match. There are some technical, technicalities associated with it that throw it into what EDA considers construction and the term then would need to be much longer and it comes unworkable. So that's why we couldn't use it. The Lacey Makerspace could not use it as in-kind match for the grant, but we recognize it's still a significant value to the Lacey Makerspace. It's, it's $264,000. The Lacey Makerspace is going to need to spend for the next seven years for rent payments, which is essential to making this training program work, but it's also a tremendous benefit to Lacey Makerspace.
So it also, while I can't work for the EDA grant match, it submits that partnership between City of Lacey, the St. Martin's University and the EDC and the longer-term horizon and commitment to the Makerspace, working together to make it a asset to the community.
Got it. Councilmember Sedman?
I just wanted to point out, being I'm in the leasing business, that this lease rate is very reasonable and the increase at two and a half percent annually, it's something that can be budgeted for, it doesn't break the bank, it's a good community connector.
They're, they're doing this in-kind, they're giving us that lease, right? So why wouldn't they be charging us fair market with a normal markup? And so that in-kind contribution would really match more of the reality. Unlike what Councilmember Sedman just pointed out, it's a no increase in, I mean, if they're getting in-kind it, why wouldn't we, they in-kind it for more of a market value?
We started out with the current lease rate because the city has paid the lease for the Makerspace to St. Martin's for the first three year. So that was based upon what they felt the lease rate would be. We just applied the, the increase of two and a half percent based upon estimate of CPI.
When I negotiated that initial lease, it was based on market rate at the time and working with St. Martin's and Matt Rannister, property manager.
But you see what, you see what I'm saying here, Rick, right? If they're going to in-kind it, why, why would they in-kind it with, with such a small increase and with no
Well, it started out as we're looking at that as a grant match. And yes, that's, that's a good observation, but now it doesn't need to be valued to a grant match. It's just a commitment to the space that the Makerspace is not going to have to pay a lease rate, whatever value that is for the next seven years to operate in Zabrow Hall.
Food for thought for the future on this conversation.
Exactly. Well, exactly. I mean, especially if we, if we're in another opportunity. And I know it's not really cooking the books, but it's they're going to in-kind it and we can use it for another possible grant match in the future.
Correct. If we did another grant application, we would reevaluate the market rate value.
There you go.
Recaps. But
Sounds, sounds good.
One, one other aspect of that is that we do want to be careful because we don't One, one other aspect of that is that we do want to be careful because we don't want the Lacy Makerspace to be burdened. Way off in the future with a rent that becomes completely unaffordable.
Uh, that's, that's fair. That's fair too. Councilmember Miller?
Yeah, uh, is, um, is, I don't know if this is a. Smart question or not, but is there some kind of a tax benefit for the them to put the two and a half percent increase in there for the the additional years? Is that? As they're giving it in kind?
They're, they're, uh, I believe a not-for-profit and uh, but again, that original um, lease structure. Was really for, that table was set up for the grant application. It's really not relevant in terms of the cash value of that lease anymore.
So they can't use it um, as a um. Benefit towards a a tax because they're nonprofit. I mean, it's giving in kind, but. For tax purposes, they wouldn't be able to use.
I don't think they pay taxes.
No, I, well, I don't know. They hide it. They're in time primarily.
That, that, that being said, uh, I, I, um, I don't see why we wouldn't. I mean, it's been moved and seconded. There is absolutely no reason I could see we wouldn't authorize this. We've already committed the funds. Four years out, if we can can convert those funds into a million-dollar grant. And if, if, if we don't get the grant, then it's not committed. We're fine. So this is like, it's like. Hello? Yeah, I mean, this is a no-brainer.
No-brainer.
Yeah, there's no downside.
National purposes, some of the equipment for this grant application is what's really exciting about this, this effort. That George and Saint Martins have have been working on is it's going to create that next level of equipment, more industrial-based CNC equipment. So right now we have the, the laser printers, the plasma cutters and the, and the 3D printers and it's in the triangles and the woodshop equipment. If we're successful with this grant application, we're going to be getting uh, CNC milling machines, milling machines with rotaries. Uh, CNC laser, more industrial-esque equipment that's going to be even more relevant to workforce training. More value to the business community to be able to access that area and then also creating those skills for the future. So this is an exciting step and I want to thank George um, for all his work and also the work of uh, Saint Martin staff and putting this together.
Uh, Deputy Mayor?
So when you talk about additional equipment, that was my question partly was. That the space seems pretty full right now. I'm wondering how they're going to fit all of the rest of it in there and stuff. Would they even assume a expansion?
Love to be able to do that, but then that would then drive up their their fixed costs, which is something that we're we're mindful of trying to to keep as low as possible. Um, there are some ways that we can rearrange space in there to accommodate most of it. There are probably a couple of large pieces that would be best in a very, very kind of a clean room environment. And those may actually be kept on another place on the campus where they've got that kind of environment and there's just. There's not going to be any rent involved in 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 doing that. It's, it's an accommodation for both the Makerspace as well as Saint Martins University.
Ah, okay, okay.
Great. Um, it's been moved and uh, seconded to um, authorize this uh, Lacy's Makerspace funding request. All in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Thanks, Rick. And really a big shout out to everyone, all the volunteers at the Lacy Makerspace are are stepping up early on. Uh, during COVID, I'd like to, you know, special shout to one of my longest and oldest friends, Sage Kouser, who actually. Um, did several of the, the, the face guards um, and used his own material that was donated by his company to, for this. And so it just, it's awesome when, you know, the community comes together and and, you know, over a major. You know, tragedy that's affected so many lives, but you know, people pulled together and it's really made a difference. And the, you know, the fact that we have this Lacy Makerspace here and ready to go, you know, has made a difference in our community and. And not only the economic benefit, the long-term economic benefit we're receiving, but you know, in this case, it's a benefit that hopefully can help save lives. So really appreciate George and Rick and all, everyone's, everyone's uh, commitment to Lacy Makerspace.
Thank you.
So good. So given that, um, our next agenda item is understanding general committees. And first up is the Finance and Economic Development Committee, um, which met on August twenty-fifth, as Troy pointed out earlier. And we did discuss the budget amendments, which we just passed. Um, but the, the second item uh, of the day was a construction update. Um, and the, uh, you know, Rick really went over uh, a bigger update on where out and on our, on our commercial, industrial and our institutional. And residential, residential construction activity. And the, the one thing that we have really noticed even through all of COVID is that the construction ac- activity in Lacey has really continued to be really strong. Um, and then the, and the permitting staff has been really busy during this entire time, you know, it took, I mean. This entire time as well, which is really a testament for them to keep these projects moving. Because I know, uh, there's nothing worse than being in in the private sector and you're up against. Um, you're relying on the city or someone else to do an inspection. If you can't get the inspection done, it's costing everyone money because you're still paying on. You're still paying uh, on your loans and everything. So, um, the fact that we were able to do that during this time is a, a testament to the city of Lacey. Um, and but one of the things that we have noticed and is that, you know, for, for years, for years and years and years that. You know, our backbone in City of Lacey was new, single-family residential construction, you know, for years and years that we. We did several, several hundred, uh, back in, you know, early two thousands or mid-two thousands, that number went way up. Um, and that was really that, you know, one of the, the budget things that really kept the city of Lacey uh, going. Was that the, the construction dollars that we got from the, the single family. What we didn't see for a long time was the multifamily construction uh, in Lacey. I mean, I, for a long time, the, the last multifamily construction was the Dakota Apartments on the corner of. Um, College and Carpenter Road. And then we didn't see anything for a long, long time, especially during the downturn. And that is what's really has made change uh, in the last couple of years, that the single-family residential permits, uh, permits has, has dropped. A little bit over the years, but what's made up is, is the um, the multifamily ha- um, and so, you know, since two thousand and sixteen. Um, the, the city has issued sixty-three minutes permits tolling um, over eighteen-hundred units for multifamily. You know, if you just divide that by the normal two hundred a year, two or fifty years, you can see we're actually well over that in during that time. Um, then the other thing is, is our industrial activity is continuing to be really strong, obviously strongest out northeast Lacey. We've just seen um, so much of that going on. Um, and uh, you know, in two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen. We almost did three million square feet of industrial space came online. Um, in twenty-twenty, it's a, an additional almost two million square feet um, of being constructed, you know, and so. We do know that, that, that's going to come to an end here pretty quick. We just can't put in millions upon millions of uh, square feet of industrial. Space on every year and think that's going to last, last forever. Um, but you know, as July, by as July of twenty-twenty, the building department did issue fifty-two commercial building permits. Um, and so that also, that equaled um, about uh. Um, well, in last year, we did about over nine thousand inspections. And we're on, we're on path to do about that much here and in twenty-twenty. So. You know, to, to date, the, the planning staff have received uh, two hundred and twenty-eight uh, planning cases that range from conditional use, shoreline, commercial, industrial. Site plan review, tree review, land clearing permits, um, et cetera. So it's been a, a busy year for construction. And it's been a, I think one of those things that um, maybe have gone, gone unnoticed, but it's definitely been that sort of. Continue to be the backbone of our uh, Lacey economy. Uh, and knowing that this won't last forever though, you know, we're, we've seen the, this cr- tran- transition from. Single-family to, to multifamily and all this industrial. But we're getting close to being out of our buildable land. And so that's really something, you know, we have to think about going forward, this, you know, these dollars that we've been used to coming in that have really supported. Our entire budget for all, for fifteen years, eighteen years going back, uh, you know, it, that is not going to last forever. And so, um, you know, Troy and the city manager is going to have to figure out how we make that transition because it's not going to be easy. But that being said, that is the end of my report. Next up is the Land Use Committee.
Alrighty, well, we got the same construction update that the mayor just described, so there's. Not much point in going over that ground again. Although if I could just add a point of personal privilege, I think the city ought to be thinking now about redevelopment and how we encourage that market. With builders and developers, so. Just a personal note. And then um, I have Transportation Committee as well. We met on September first. And we approved. Obviously we approved our agenda, but we got updates on the twenty-second and College Street Roundabout. The Mullen Carpenter Road Improvements, the one-eleven interchange. Hawks Prairie Roundabout, Capital City Water and Wastewater Improvements and the twenty-twenty overlay. Um, program focusing on Meridian and Twenty-Fifth Loop Improvements. Excuse me, one thing that we did talk about a little bit was. Um, that our motorists are going to get something of a relief next year. Now that we have these really big projects on major arterials done. But our. Wonderful Mr. Eric quickly pointed out that there's an awful lot of just maintenance work that's going to be coming up in the future, so. I'm afraid that little bit of respite is going to be short-lived, but I guess everybody needs to keep in mind that. The inconvenience we experience with construction means that tomorrow we have much better streets to drive on. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Um, the land use, you did the transportation committee, and now we're on to Boards Commission Committee Report.
Mayor, may I, can I touch base on that report just real quick?
Sure.
Uh, I just wanted to mention that exit one-eleven was, I think, six months of, it's going to be finished six months early. So that's savings there. And I think that with the um, traffic improvements for the um. Marvin Road Roundabout, um, that, that, you know, because they stopped, I, I live up there, so they stopped. Direction, uh, traffic uh, in one direction. And so I think a lot of that traffic, when it's released, going from north to southbound. Um, hits the uh, roundabout at um, Hawks Prairie Road and and uh, going towards exit eleven. And that contributes, contributes to a lot of the backup because you don't have any cars for five minutes and then you have. A lot of cars for five minutes because they're waiting for, you know, crop, you know, opposite direction traffic at the, at the roundabout for um, Mar- Marvin Road. So um, something to consider when you think about those projects, saving money and uh, sometimes one project affects the other.
You know, it's funny, I was, I was just having this conversation yesterday because there, uh, someone was saying uh, how wonderful the, the twenty-second roundabout looks in college. And how happy they are now that the project's done and, you know, and it's, it does look amazing. It looks great. And now that the project's done, yeah, everyone's happy. But, you know, during the project is just the worst thing, worst thing ever, you know, and so this is, and. People have to remember, you know, that projects have been on the books for twenty, I mean, for, for, well before anyone here was on council. Uh, for sure. And so, you know, we plan these things forever and ever and ever. Um, and you know, the, the number one complaint, I think a lot of us hear is that traffic congestion, like we need to upgrade our, our, our infrastructure. And then we, when we do upgrade our infrastructure, it's just, I can't believe this, all this construction is happening. It's a, it's a no-win situation. So welcome to our lives, you know, this is just what happened.
I love the roundabout, believe me.
That twenty-second roundabout does look amazing, that, that um, the red diamond interchange is almost open after all of these years. Of us trying to get that interchange done. It didn't turn out to be what we thought it was going to be, which was a normal. Way oversized normal interchange, but I think once it's done, once it's completed, it's going to be very effective. It's. It's already, it's not a hundred percent open right now, but it's getting close. And when it, when it was open, the, the lanes were open, it was working really well. When it comes down to this one lane, when it's, it's, you know, of course, it doesn't work very well, one lane each direction. Um, but, you know, we'll get there, we're, we're ahead of time. I know it's been so hard for you guys that live in northeast Lacey. I can't imagine. But it's been like for you guys living northeast Lacey. I mean, it's just gotta be a nightmare, but, I mean, just hang in there, we're, we're almost through it, so. Okay, now I'm on to Boards Commission Committee Reports. Uh, first up, as myself, the mayor's forum did meet last Friday. Um, you know, and a, a lot of these times and during the mayor's forums is, it's just an opportunity for the mayors. Get together and and talk about what's going on in their communities and really bounce ideas off each other. You know, the, the, the one thing that I, I did bring up, um, was sort of this idea of, of working with. Um, DOT to figure out what we're going to do with. Really the unsafe conditions of, of, of people in our right-of-way's, uh, in, in DOT right-of-way's. And this is something that, I know in South County was sitting back, you know, not having to worry about a lot of this, but. Um, this is one of those issues where we, we really need to get on the same page with our other jurisdictions and. And even Thurston County uh, on what the, the plan is along with the state is, you know, going forward with that. Um, and so we just uh, had a sort of, you know, kind of long conversation on, on, on what's going on there. And, and the fact that how, you know, our, our outreach coordinator has. Been in contact with so many people there and have, you know, with our contract through the Community Action Council, we have been able to place people in services. Um, and what we're seeing is what's left are people who, who may not want services. And so, you know, what, what do we do then? Um, and this is something that, you know, all the cities and the counties, we, we need to figure out, you know. And it's going to probably be kicked down to the Regional Housing Council for, for discussion for sure. Um, but, you know, I think we, we have to have a plan going forward. Otherwise, if, you know, what Lacey does is different than Olympia, which is different somewhere, then that, that doesn't help the region. We're just pushing things around. And so, I, you know, so I sort of kicked off that conversation at the mayor's forum. Um, I had, I've had conversations with uh, Mayor Canet on this as well. And I think it's just a, a conversation that it's need, that will need to continue at the Regional Housing Council. Um, I also talked about, um, and that's the mayor's forum, and I, I also talked about my next meeting, which is the Transportation Policy Board. Um, which met yesterday morning bright, early at seven AM. It's my favorite meeting. Um, I'm not a morning person. Um, and so, uh. Couple of things on the agenda is we, um, we, we finally uh, recommended and passed the regional uh, R-TIP amendment. For the annual update recommendation. Um, and then the, the next item agenda is the twenty-twenty Rural Community Support Program, Call for Projects and Process and Review. This is something that is, was pretty kind of exciting because um, for a long time at the Transportation Policy Board level. We've recognized that uh, the South County jurisdictions. Um, inevitably are, are na- are never able to sort of apply and receive some of the larger grants. That Lacey, Olympia, and especially, uh, you know, Tomwater and and Thurston County um, receive from the federal government. Because they don't have the staff to manage those federal dollars coming in. And federal grant dollars for transportation, which is what every jurisdiction relies upon, is very expensive money. It's extremely expensive money. And, you know, over the years, um, you know, for example, the city of Lacey has been very gracious where. We've taken um, federal dollars uh, that the South County couldn't use. Um, and applied it to our project, one of our projects, and, and in return, we gave money to say, City of Yelm, where they'd used, that was de-federalized. So they could do a project, you know, and, and sometimes that works out where um, the larger jurisdictions can take that on. But you're, we're also been taking on those additional requirements, and so it becomes expensive. Um, and it's worked out sometimes, but it's not a, a reliable funding source uh, for South County. And uh, South County has some unique challenges when they have a, a highway that goes through each of their jurisdictions. Um, very much like I-5 is cutting through Lacey, that causes unique challenges. Uh, especially challenges for their, for their downtowns and everything else uh, that's on, on, on a highway. It's, it's, it's difficult. And so they have their infrastructure needs, but they, they, they can't really uh, fund them the, the way where the larger cities are able to do. And so graciously, what the, what Thurston County um, decided to do was take some of their federal money. Um, that they receive, that's from the county, um, and de-federalize it every single year. And then allow, give it the, the South Counties to um, use that de-federalized money for their transportation projects. Um, which will allow them to do some of these projects that have been on the books for a long time, but they can't afford to do. And so we got a, an update, um. You know, the, the, there's, there's the Regional Planning Council staff has been working with accounting. Even the mayors of the cities to try to figure out, okay, um, if they're going to get, allocate, say, uh, five hundred and fifty, six hundred thousand dollars every year. Um, what would that pro- what would the process? What would that pro- what would the process look like, um, and one of the big things that comes up is. What will the match requirement be, and, and this time around, I, I actually advocated. For there not to be a match, because I, you know, again, first of all, it's been a tough year. Um, for all the jurisdictions when it comes to COVID and their, their, everything else, and so when you're. Um, all of a sudden, a, a project comes up that, yeah, you can receive funding for, especially transportation project, you can receive funding for, but if you haven't budgeted for the match. Then, so you're still in the same boat, right, can't, it's going to be difficult to use that money if you have to come up with a match that you don't have. And so that is one of the things that we agreed on, strictly, at least for this first year, um, for allocation that the South County. Um, would have to come up with a, a matching, or a grant, or a, a, a match for, for these grants the first time out. We also discussed some other, other things, but I think that is a real big issue that came out of that is. Um, that's the big, probably the biggest change um, from all the other different type of, of, of federal or, or transportation dollars that come in is that. In this case, um, they won't have to come up with a, a match for the, this first year, so that was that. Uh, we, we passed a transit safety performance measures, performance measures is something. That's relatively new over the past couple of years, that's been slowly implemented, um, this time was specifically looking at the transit only. Um, and then we, we had a lot of conversation over the twenty one, twenty twenty one state legislative session. And, you know, for years, I've been going on the hill advocating for, for the region. On our, our prior, regional priorities, um, especially our, our regional transportation um, priorities. And, but no one really knows what this year is going to look like wi- with COVID. Um, but we do have, did have a huge list of, of things that. We feel like we need to bring forward to um, the state legislature, and one of those things I brought forward again was the DOT. Right away, uh, when it comes to, you know, um, those who are um, are homeless and are using that right away. To stay in, and uh, I, I, I just, again, really. Put forward this idea that the state needs to have a plan too, th- this cannot be left up to the cities to try to figure this out. We need to have to partner in the state, this is their right away, we don't even have authority within this right away. Um, but we're the ones that, of course, it, it's visible, and I know everyone on this council's received an email saying, what are you doing? Uh, you know, what's going on over here, well, it's in the state right away, we don't, we, we have zero authority within our state right away, so we have to figure out. Uh, not only um, within this region, but the state needs to figure out what they're going to do um, with this issue as well. And so there was quite a bit of conversation that went around, went around that issue. And that is the end of my report, so uh, next up is the Deputy Mayor.
Uh, so I'm going to begin with the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency since that was uh, yesterday in the morning. And basically, um, just the general. A, um, agenda was pretty simple, it was, um, we passed a personnel, personnel policy reduction and forced furlough. Um, action, and although they haven't laid off anyone yet, but they needed it in place. And then also, um, this was just a um. Uh, making sure that the um, change in regulations numbering agrees with what. Um, ORCA has in place, so the RCW seventy point nine four. Um, those numbers were changed to RCW seventy eighty point fifteen, so it matched up with what. It uh, what it wa- said it was, so that was pretty simple, but. Then we had a presentation on biochar, and that is essentially a um. Carbon leftover from biomass such as wood and uh, grass and so forth, and. Um, one of the, it does give emissions, but um, it has probably less particulates than say charcoal and stuff. So it was rather an interesting presentation. The other thing, though, in August, um, our air qualities for particulate matter two point five. It was really good for all um, six counties, including Lacey, in fact, Lacey had thirty one days of. That were within the um, good air quality uh, range, however. Um, Dr. Hadley was giving a forecast for today and tomorrow, and. As you probably know, that all the smoke was blown offshore, and now it's coming back in. Um, and Oregon is having heavy, heavy smoke, and it's, the wind is going to change and it's coming up here, so. Uh, this evening, and I notice it's getting kind of um, hazy out right now. And tomorrow will be really, really, really bad for all people, not just um. People that are sensitive to air quality problems, and so be aware of that, and hopefully people stay in as much as they can. And that's, was pretty significant when you saw what, um, how she mapped this and showed what was going to happen. So Lot uh, also met yesterday in the evening, and. We uh, basically talked about the draft twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget and capital improvements plan. And asked if there was any um, questions or changes and stuff about it, one of the things that they um. There was a list of things that already put on a, a delayed scheduling, um, because of. Um, reduced revenue, and one of it said, um, the Martin Way uh, Reclaim Water Plant. Uh, repairs a bulk of them, and what they should, the bulk is not the right word, so I had to change to some. Uh, because the ones that are most urgent will be done before twenty twenty six, those that can wait will be done in twenty twenty six. We had an update on capital projects at our work session as well, talking about the north outfall. And um, the surface cover needs to be restored out. Um, off the point, and then when um, every permit cycle, um, there's a diving inspection on. For marine repair on the um, pipe out there, and they discovered that all fifty five. Um, carbon steel filaments were corroded and will need to be replaced. For our business meeting, um, we went, we ended up then. Um, approving the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget and capital improvements plan um, to send out for public review and comment. And um, then we had a staff updates, and we talked about. Capital Lake um, in the financing government work group, I'm in the steering committee, but for Lot, but. This is, was for the finance part, and um. They kind of, they were pretty taken aback that um, one of the discussions was that. Everyone was going to give upfront um, payment rather than by the state, and they made sure that the state had. Needed to put money into the cost of financing this first. And then we had a sea level rise uh, presentation, because the Port and Lawton, Olympia are part of this. The sea level rise plan, and we had an update to the T uh, to uh, total maximum daily load, TMTL. Uh, up to shoots, and um, October seventh is the end of the comment period for that. And it's rather critical because Lot could be affected about how they um. Determine what the TMDL is, and it could be costly, so we're hoping that they. That they look at our comments and talk about that, and I think that's my report, and also Animal Services doesn't meet until. Next week, I think.
Yeah, Councilor Cox.
I'll be very short and sweet, intercity ca- transit canceled their first meeting in September. As did the Health and Human Services Council, and Regional Housing Council meets next Thursday, and that is it.
Councilmember Greenstein.
So uh, Thurston Communications nine one one met last week, um, just a couple of things on the agenda that I think are relevant. For starters, we went over the financials, which were actually the June financials, everything is looking actually pretty good, we're on. On budget for both expenses and revenue. Things are progressing with our radio, uh, the new radio installation, the new radio project. Uh, we're kind of at the, the next phase now, which is what they call the true up phase. Where they now take everything that was in the original plan and the original recommendations, and. Now that we've actually done all the work to see what's going to work and where they actually need towers and all that, to kind of match it up and see which pieces can go, which pieces need to be added. To come up with what the final budget for that's going to be, we anticipate it being within. Um, within, within what we had left for a buffer, so we don't expect anything uh, added, added to the ordinary there. What else was of any consequence? Couple of new staff members that are going to be necessary for the radio system have been hired, that took some. Considerable time and effort to find people with the right qualifications, because this is some new technology, and it was. Difficult to get them in place, and I guess the last, or the next to last thing was, um, the executive director uh, has announced his retirement. So Keith will be with us through the, uh, through all of next year, his retirement will take place January of twenty twenty two. So he gave us plenty of notice, which is, makes it much easier for transition purposes. Uh, now we have to make some decisions as whether we're going to look internal or do a search, you know, externally for his replacement. Uh, but that, that will, him giving us this early heads up is going to be very helpful, because we're going into our budget meetings, in fact, our first uh. Budget committee meeting is next week, and we'll, it'll help to know this in advance, because we are going to have to plan for. Hiring at least one of those two positions, we're going to want some overlap with when Keith, you know, at least that last two to three months that Keith is there, so. It'll help us for budgeting, um, and that is my report.
Wow, that's a, that's big news, he's, how long has Keith been?
Yeah, so Keith has been with the agency, he's been our executive director, I think it's five years now. Um, and he was there as our deputy director for a couple as well.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think he's, I think he's had a total of six years, but, you know, thirty years in the industry, but I think the last six or so with us, and he's done a great job.
He came in, he came on right when I got on council, so about six years ago.
Yeah, yep, he's done an excellent job.
Yeah, yeah, he's done a great job, uh, Councilmember Miller.
Oh, yeah, I'll lead out with TRPC, met on Sep- uh, September fourth. Uh, seems like traffic is uh, consuming a lot of meeting time and space in a lot of different areas, so. Since the mayor already briefed on that, I'll move right into the uh, mid-year update. Census uh, came up first, and, and it looks like we have a, Thurston County has like a seventy five percent response rate, and. State, that's third in the state, uh, and uh, the state of Washington has a ninety four percent enumerated response rate, which is third in the nation, so we're doing pretty good here. Uh, the Buildable Lands Report uh, mandated by the Growth Management Act, uh, it, you know, adopted in twenty nineteen. Uh, that report will be expected in twenty twenty one. Uh, we did uh, go over the climate mitigation plan just a little bit, um. Not a whole lot can be done with that at this point, uh, some of the other things that uh, are essential to the city of Lacey is the Martin Way Corridor Study. Uh, which is going to be conducted, the um, not sure when that one's due. Uh, but I'll be able to brief you a little bit more as, as we get a little closer to that, uh, but, you know, on Martin Way. One of, one of the things that we discussed is that, you know, Martin Way is, is three jurisdictions. Uh, you know, all on one road within a three to five mile stretch, you know, it goes all the way. Olympia stops at College Street and Lacey starts at College Street and goes to Carpenter Road, then stops there. Then uh, Thurston County goes from Carpenter Road to Galaxy and stops there, and then Lacey picks back up at Galaxy. Going on be out, uh, beyond and out uh, past Costco a little bit. Uh, and so I guess that's going to make it interesting for, for the study and, and how everybody's involved with that, I did tell them that we would. You know, gladly take the uh, Carpenter to Galaxy section off their hands, uh, Washington Department of Transit.
Yeah, they just need to allow Lacey to do all the permitting for that Martin Way corridor, and I'll, I'll be good.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Pretty pleased.
And so, uh, one of the things that we discuss about that, that UGA area is, uh, you know, upcoming improvements. Uh, like sidewalks, which, you know, I, I thought that was pretty cool, and I, I thought, you know, well, maybe we can take that over after they do those things. Uh, Department of uh. Transportation uh, is hoping for a sixty percent telework. They're consolidating a couple of their offices, Seattle offices, uh, and they're creating a telework advisory committee. The uh, telework percentage went up seventy percent earlier this year, and it has uh, since, you know, settled back down to fifteen percent. Uh, which is, in their opinion, uh, not enough, and they would like to see that number go back up. Uh, getting people off the roads, and uh, I, I guess it's, it's safer all the way around, not only that, of course, you've got. You know, all kinds of buildings that they rent and lease, uh, costing them extra dollars, so they're looking. Uh, to reduce their bottom line, uh, even though that was not spoken in the meeting, that's what it appears to be to me, uh, there is a regional trails plan. Um, as, as people have been, you know, uh, we've been going through pandemic and people been, you know, kind of trapped at home, our trails and are, are getting used a whole lot more. And so, uh, now we're going to be studying how much it's going to need, we're going to need to, to get those trails back into the kitchen, condition that they were. Uh, prior to, but, you know, of course, we don't know when this is going to be over, so um, more details on that to come. I'll move right into the LTAC meeting that we had on September third. Uh, we, you know, uh, we, we have limited funds because of the pandemic, and so, you know, how to disperse those limited funds. Uh, is, seems to be the, the thing that we're talking about the most, and uh, we have uh. We, we need to see and take a look at uh, all the different applicants and what they can do at fifty percent of their ask. Uh, fifty percent of their ask is going to still be a little tight for us, but that's, that's what's required in this time, so. Uh, we will be getting back together on Monday, the fourteenth, to hear their fifty percent proposals. Uh, to see if we can disperse to them and keep them up and running and going, and, and try to fulfill our promise to them.
So, I'm sorry to be jumping in here, is that where we're at, up to your date is fifty percent occupancy, have, have we lost fifty percent of the LTAC funds?
It, it, yeah, it's not that we have fifty percent occupancy, it's, it's that, you know, we have. Less revenue substantially, or less revenue, almost fifty percent less revenue, so I guess if, if there is an equation between occupancy and revenue, that would be. That would be a fair assessment, and uh, since we had to adopt a new budget earlier this year. Uh, we had to uh, trim out a lot of the things that we normally would have done, uh, some of the things have fallen off the calendar because. Of uh, social distancing, we weren't able to have a lot of those different events, uh, but some of the other things just have to be scaled back. Because of the new budget that we adopted. Unfortunate, uh, we're hoping.
Is that, is that, whereas, is that, is fifty percent of the revenues come in that we expected this year for next year?
Yeah, so, one thing I, I want to clarify too, so because we typically have about eighteen to twenty applications, LTAC decided not to fund anything that would be in a sense, an event. Because we just can't predict if we're going to have any type of social gathering, and so the applicants were limited to just your standard, uh, the chamber, the VCB. The rack and, you know, basically organizations that still can function without an event specific, um, you know, activity. Um, but yeah, I think we're looking around three hundred thousand uh, dollars for twenty twenty one, that's about two hundred thousand dollars plus off what we normally receive.
Wow, and so no events, so even though events could possibly be back by next. Summer, we're just saying sorry, not going to, we're not going to find you.
So the dilemma is, like, if you have a, an event in March, you're spending time, money, and effort really. At the late part of twenty twenty, and if we can't reimburse you because your event's not held, you know, we're not basically doing any favors to organizers, so. That was a difficult decision for LTAC to make, but given the uncertainty, um, that's kind of where we're at, and given the fact that we don't have the dollars, it'd be. Difficult to do anyway, even if we wanted to.
Is that the same thing that jurisdictions are doing, are, are they not giving out funds for events?
So I heard Tom Water was saying that your event cannot be held, and we will not reimburse you.
Um, okay.
So put substantial risk on, you know, the event organizer, so again, we were trying to be somewhat conservative. We shouldn't raise hopes since we just don't know the outlook is for really the next six months.
Wow, that's a big deal.
Wow, that's a big deal. Okay, sorry, I did, I mean, that's uh the LTAC, I was a LTAC uh chair for a long, for a long time. So this has always uh been something I've been very interested in. So I appreciate it.
Yep, no problem. And so it's, it's been difficult decisions to make, but at the same time, um you know, we, we just have to be conservative, conservative with what we have in, which is, is not a whole lot. And that is my report.
Uh Councilmember Sedman.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh Community Action Council meets on the twenty third. And the uh Solid Waste Advisory Committee has a couple of open houses on the Solid Waste Management Plan uh next week. The fourteenth and seventeenth, that's Monday and Thursday. Um and it always seems that these things get uh planned during our city council meeting. So um they're from six to seven o'clock. So we'll have difficult making it, you know, the last half of that meeting on Thursday, if, if any of it at all, but uh um the public can learn about the new solid waste management plan. And I know Lenny put a lot of work into that um as well as myself the last several years. And it's good to see that we have a good working document and we're not working off of from two thousand nine. So um good job, Lenny, working on that. We saw it, finally saw it through. And so other than that, that's it. That's my report.
Great. Councilor Cogle.
You all were very interesting tonight. And I regret to inform you, I have no report.
Then we've reached the end of our agenda. We made it through another one, guys. Uh
Oh yay.
Next time, we do have a work session next Thursday. Is that scheduled for in four o'clock, I think? Seven o'clock because of the, yeah. Give me a late one next, next, next Thursday. But until we meet again, um you keep it classy, Lacey. I'll call us meeting adjourned.